We are going to do the elect the twenty twenty-five board officers. We are going to start with the chair person. Can I get a nomination for board chair?
I nominate Joel Boardwick for chair.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes and I will accept on behalf of Joel. We had previously discussed this, so he is willing to take the role. Next up, we will take a nomination for vice chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes and I accept the nomination. Next up, we will nominate board clerk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Last but not least, we will nominate treasurer.
I nominate Barb Jones for treasurer.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, now we are going to welcome Lynn Leopold and Matt Stephan to the board. Um, we're glad you guys are here. Hope you guys are ready. Um, we are going to start with the oath of office and if everybody can join me in saying this, that would be great. Does everybody have it? Alright. Um, it is an honor that you were selected elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assumed a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legal responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, seditionship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of oath of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly can affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, none of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent district number one seventy-seven to the best of my ability. Welcome aboard. Next up, uh, is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval? Are there any changes or adjustments that need to be made? Okay, can I get an approval, please?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, open forum. No one for open forum? Alright. Um, next up, we are going to is number eight. We are going to set regular board meeting dates, times, and locations. Mrs. Frank?
Okay, so, uh, we went ahead and made a calendar so that, um, we have the same pattern that we typically follow. So the second Monday of each month will be the regular board meeting and the fourth Monday of each month will be the work session. Um, as we looked through the dates, there were just a couple of conflicts, one being Memorial Day, so we will not have a work session um, in May because of Memorial Day. And the second conflict had to do with the band showcase in November. So, um, rather than move the date, um, I, we decided that we would just meet at five o'clock rather than six thirty. So those are the only two changes in the schedule.
Any comments or questions? If not, can I get a motion, please?
I move this forward.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number nine, set the twenty twenty-five board salaries. Um, the twenty twenty-four salary was set at, uh, three thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-one cents per board member per year. Um, there was a three percent increase last year. The board chair, we had an additional two hundred dollars a year. The board clerk was an additional one hundred dollars a year. Special meetings were set at seventy-five dollars. Out of town meetings at fifteen dollars per hour with a maximum of eight hours and that includes travel time. The negotiations committee, buildings and ground, and project oversight committee rate of fifteen dollars per hour. There was no deduction from the stipend due to board member absence from meeting. Uh, in odd years, board members received a seven hundred dollar technology stipend. Um, is there any changes or any proposals for the twenty twenty-five salary?
Yes, uh, I am, even though we've done it every other year, uh, I move that we raise the salary, the base salary, three percent.
Any other comments or discussion? Alright, we will vote on this one separately. Oh, do I have a motion and a second?
My second.
Alright, we will vote on this separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, next we will talk over the rest of the salary uh, schedule.
Yeah, I could ask that it be raised eight, five dollars so that it becomes eighty dollars a meeting. I'm gonna make that a motion. That special meetings will be set at eighty dollars.
Any other comments or suggestions on any of the other, um, items? Alright, if not, we will vote on. Yep. I'm gonna read through it first. Um, we'll leave the motion and will be for board chair staying the same, board clerk staying the same, special meeting set at eighty, and then E F and G all remaining the same. Can I get a motion for that, please? Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, number ten, we are going to designate the official newspaper. Um, we are going to designate the Cottonwood County Citizen, um, will be designated as the official District one seventy-seven newspaper. Is there any comments or questions on that? Alright, if not, can I get a motion, please? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number eleven, um, is to designate district legal counsel. Um, so we would like to designate district legal counsel as of squires Waldsberger and Mace and then bond counsel of Dorsey and Whitney. Are there any questions or comments? Alright, if not, can I get an approval or a motion for that, please?
I motion to approve legal counsel of squires Waldsberger and Mace and bond counsel is Dorsey and Whitney.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number twelve, uh, we are going, this is a designating superintendent Jamie Frank as the identified official with authority for ISD one seventy-seven. Uh, so what this is, is the Minnesota Department of Education, the Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, and the Office of Higher Education requires districts to annually designate an identified official with authority. This person is responsible for authorizing, reviewing, and recertifying user access for the state reporting system. Any questions on this? If not, can I get a motion, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, number thirteen, approve resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions and revenue enhancements in programs and position and reasons thereof. Mrs. Frank?
This is a routine annual resolution to be used if reductions are needed to meet budgetary requirements.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion, please? Alright, beans, this is a real resolution. We will start with Lynn. Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bree? And myself, yes, motion passes. Number fourteen, um, is a, we need to approve a resolution designating signatory authority. Jamie, can you explain this one, please?
Sure, there are a few people in the district who have signatory authority. They are listed on the attachment. So the people who would have the authority would include the chairman of the board, the clerk of the board, the treasurer of the board, Peggy Puffer as the finance director, business manager, and myself as a superintendent.
Alright, can I get a motion for this, please?
I move we approve this resolution.
Alright, beans said it is a resolution. This will be a roll call vote. Lynn?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bree? And myself, yes, motion passes. Number fifteen, uh, we are approve authorizing the payment of bills between board members for the purpose of obtaining discounts. Required pay prepayment of bills between board members or board meetings for the purpose of obtaining discounts. Required prepayments on orders to avoid penalty charges, pay registration. Authorize the district to pay board bills in the event a board meeting is postponed. Authorize the superintendent and business manager to approve processing of payments for invoices submitted and under contractors approved by the board and under circumstances when it is deemed necessary and appropriate to proceed with payment. Are there any questions or comments on this? If not, can I get a motion, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number sixteen is the approval of the committee assignments. So everybody should have received this in their board packet. Are there any changes or comments that you would like to make on this?
The names, the names in red are the changes, so just go ahead and pay attention to that. Once this is approved, we will turn it all black, so it's all one color.
Alright, if there are no changes, can I get a motion to move it forward? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright. Number seventeen, this is our acceptance of donations and we have a good list, so we have one hundred dollars from Karen and Charles Dewans for the weekend backpack program. Two thousand dollars for, from Ag Builders for the weekend back program. One hundred and fifty dollars from Midwest Ag Advisors for the weekend backpack program. Four hundred dollars from the American Lutheran Church for the weekend backpack program. Twenty dollars from an anonymous slash Toro for the weekend backpack program. Uh, fifty dollars from Laura Payotter from, for the weekend backpack program. Five hundred dollars from Don Brugman for the weekend backpack program. Fifty-five dollars from Beth- Bethany Lutheran Church for the weekend backpack program. Five hundred dollars from Dana and Leland Crumry for the weekend backpack program. Five hundred dollars from Donovan and Gail Olson for the weekend backpack program. Three hundred and fifty dollars from KBQ for Brooklyn Rolls Eagle Achievement Project. Two thousand dollars from Midway Farm Equipment for the football program. Twenty-five dollars from Steve Elness, class of nineteen sixty-six state basketball team for the AD Athletic Hall of Fame. Sorry, my eyes are bugging out here. Let's see, two hundred dollars from James Nelson, um, of nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-six state basketball team for the AD Athletic Hall of Fame. A hundred dollars from Robert Bulliard, class of nineteen sixty-six, sixty-six state basketball team for the AD Athletic Hall of Fame. Two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty dollars from the, from Thomas Forsberg, class of nineteen sixty-six state basketball team for the AD Athletic Hall of Fame. Two hundred dollars from Patricia Brettsman for the weekend backpack program. Six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents from the Wyndham Ban- Banton Hockey Team for the weekend backpack program and four hundred dollars from Bank Midwest for the weekend backpack program. Thank you to all of our donors this month. Um, I know the weekend backpack program was in need of some funding and it was amazing to see the list of support that we have out there. Oh, sorry, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Wyndham Lions Club from the Wyndham back, weekend backpack program. Uh, can I get a motion to approve these? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, now we are going to go to our principal report. Um, we will start with Mr. Barfick for the elementary school.
Thank you. Welcome to, uh, new members. Um, alright, this is a quick one today. Uh, I just have a couple of things about what has happened, what's coming, and some other news to share with you. Some things that have happened since the start of the year so far here. Um, we had our PBIS expectations rotations at the elementary school, which means, of course, we focus on our positive behavior, interventions, and supports. And so one way that we do that is we just review with kids what their expectations are after things like breaks. So we went over those right away the first day back from winter break. Uh, went over our expectations for the cafeteria, playground, iPad, uh, usage, restrooms, how to behave in the hallways, and classroom expectations. So they were pretty well received and of course, now that we have snow, well, not now that we have snow, but when we have snow, we got to talk about all our snow expectations too, so that was exciting. Um, we have started winter benchmark testing, which actually we are finishing up today. Um, and we use the Fastbridge suite of assessments three times a year. These assessments help us to determine our students' current levels of achievement in, uh, reading and math. Uh, we identify needs and we're able to have our teachers group students and, um, work to close gaps or accelerate students as needed. So that is some of the exciting things happening at the elementary. Some things coming up, we have family engagement night tomorrow. We are doing a seatbelt and car seat safety. And so there is, whenever we do a family engagement night, there's a free meal. So if everybody signed up, then, uh, it'll be a good one. We have Letters Live Training on January twentieth. We have Kiwanis Terrific Kid in January. We actually had our first one today for our first and second graders and then we'll have another one on Thursday for our third and fourth graders. Just identifying kids who are having all the terrific things. Uh, of course, we always say all of our kids are terrific kids, but we get to identify a couple, uh, once a quarter. Um, and our PTO is hosting a movie event for kids after school on January thirty-first. So you probably will see things about that coming up on our social media. In other news, um, we are working on Read Act, uh, adopting a new language arts curriculum because of the Read Act. And we have chosen a K four curriculum for reading. And, um, we will present it in a February meeting for your approval. The staff at Bridges Preschool has also been looking at a new curriculum. They've been using theirs for over ten years. It's getting a little, um, a little far out for its usage. Um, and it's also to meet the needs of the Read Act, and so they have narrowed this down to about two options. Um, the new preschool curriculums, it's actually pretty amazing to me, all the things that they have to cover in preschool. But all the new curriculums that we're looking at include concepts that will help students with reading, mathematics, science, social skills, uh, social and emotional learning, life skills. Of course, their fine and gross motor skills. There is a lot packed into the three hours that our kids are at Bridges and so uh, these new curriculums will really help our teachers just meet all the needs of all of our kids. Um, and of course, we're always still looking for more paraprofessionals, so if you know of anybody that, uh, you know, is looking for, uh, an nice, uh, nice job working with kids and has, you know, the kind of same schedule as their kids, I'll take them. Um, if you have any questions?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Barfick. We will go on to the middle school report. Mr. Nielsen?
Hey, good evening. Uh, thanks for accepting my report. Welcome new members. It's great to see you. Hey, uh, as Cory mentioned, uh, over at middle school, high school, also I might be speaking for both of us. Our star testing window is open again. We test three times a year, math and reading. Uh, we will keep this open and, uh, we are, we have had numerous classes already, fifth through eighth grade. Take the star reading and, um, some are going on then to the math or vice versa. It's been great. I have had a number of teachers run up to me, actually show me out the printed and say, "Look at this student went up three grade levels in reading," stuff like that. That's amazing. But I'm not gonna lie to you, I did have one come up and say, "Hey, I need one to retest." They were like sleeping and they got done in about two minutes and two seconds, so can we re, um, so, but overall, it's been great. It's fun to see the growth that takes place and it's a great guide for us as we plan our instruction. Last day of the second quarter coming up this week, done with the first semester. Hard to believe, I cannot believe we are there, but, uh, students will dismiss at twelve thirty-five from the middle school, high school. Our teachers will be working in their classrooms to, uh, get some grades finalized, wrap up, do a little preparation for the second semester. I still can't believe we're saying that. On January twentieth, on Monday, students will not be in school. We will have some staff development at the middle school, high school. Again, and we've kind of hinted on this a little bit, our big focus is reading, just improving those reading scores, reading for our students. Um, the things that we're seeing so far, I like it. I like it. So we're excited, uh, to have a little staff development on Monday with our teachers to continue improving reading achievement. Uh, as you can see, our middle school discipline, I just wanted to throw that out there for December, fifteen office referrals. Not to say there weren't a couple of the things that happened, they might not have gotten put in as an office referral, but we had fifteen. Fifty-three the year before, as you can see in two thousand twenty-three. December twentieth was a great day. We had a half day there. Just before I wanted to touch base, our middle school students did a phenomenal job. We kind of had some fun rotations going on. We had movies, and then we did rotations. Students that maybe needed to make up a little bit of detention time, they had the opportunity to do that during the school day and wrap up some of those minutes. Whether it was, uh, behavior, tardies, anything like that. December twentieth was a great day for that and students did a phenomenal job. I'm not gonna lie, high school students weren't around. It was kind of nice. It was quiet. They were out doing, it was good, but they were out doing their own thing and our middle school students kind of, we, we had the gym, we had different rooms set up for different activities. We had some fun snowflake making, different games. It, it was a great day on December twentieth. Then I just want to point out number five there, just a growth area for myself, as we've been talking, we've been talking about PLCs that I really am working on, just kind of that communication between our special education teachers and our general education teachers and vice versa, the other way too. Uh, just a growth area that I've noticed I need to help with and work on, so those communication lines and that collaboration really continues to take place. Mr. Joyce has been helping me with that, our PLC leaders, um, looking at kind of just a communication guidelines booklet, because we do have brand new special education teachers this year as well as general education teachers. And I tell you what, when we have boot camps, when we have workshops, it seems like we cover a lot, but then these students get in here and it's full steam ahead. We have our mentor, mentee meetings, but just working on some little reminders for them about collaboration, communication, and I want to grow in that and help our teachers do better. So happy new year, everybody, school Vikings. Questions?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you so much.
We will now move to the high school report. Mr. Joyce?
Alright, good evening, everybody. Uh, I've got included, of course, the eagle eye. I want to encourage everybody to read that. For those of you that are, are new to the board, that's our middle and high school community update. We put it out on social media. We email it out to all students and all families in the district, so just try to give you a thousand foot view of what's going on at the, the middle and high school. So we could, we try to send that out about the first of the month, every month, so you can look forward to that. Uh, I've got a, I don't know what an action item, but maybe just a blessing item that I'm hoping for. Uh, the seniors have presented, uh, a mural proposal for the, uh, I guess we're putting them in junior hall now because the senior hall is full of murals and I'm not gonna be the guy to paint over murals, okay? That'll be my predecessor in, in twenty years, okay? Uh, so we are gonna fill up junior hall with murals and this is the mural design that our seniors have uh, presented to their classmates and the concept there is kind of just a picture kind of clothesline that has a number of different activities and it won't be specific to any individual senior from this class, but generally speaking, you'll notice uh, like they try to use some concept designs with a couple of our current athletes, just so you get the idea of what that would look like. But it would represent who they are as a class and, and the number of the activities that they are a part of and just what it means to be a Wyndham Eagle. So I think it's a cool design. It's different than what we have, uh, anywhere in any of the murals so far. Fairly artistic, so if, if nobody has opposition here, I'm gonna let the committee that's working on it move forward and start painting that soon. Any questions on that one?
Do you think there'd be any changes in it yet or is, they're not gonna do a signing on it or anything like has been done in a few?
Good question on that. I know they've tried to do the signing and I, I don't know where they would sign this one, to be honest with you. Um, but I will ask them that and if there are any changes, I'll just make sure the board is aware of those changes or if they do intend to sign where they would put that, because I think the way it looks right now works just fine. It may be a year for us to say, let's go back to not signing the, uh, the mural. That'd be just fine too, so. Yeah, we're working kind of down junior hall. This one would fit nicely next to the one from last year, but then next year, we kind of got to start on the other side of the hall, but we got a lot of space there to use for the next fifteen years. We'll be in good shape. Okay. Like I said, I'll bring back any changes there. We had a great close, as Mr. Nielsen talked about, uh, December twentieth. Uh, we actually took our, uh, ninth through tenth, ninth through twelfth graders to two different locations because there's too many for one. We took our eleventh, twelfth grade to the State Theater and, uh, ninth and tenth grade got to go to the bark. And, uh, the bark was phenomenal, actually, um, Lynn's, uh, husband was able to help us there. That was great. Uh, but we watched the movie Red One and, uh, the kids did a great job. I said, "When we go, you're gonna leave it cleaner than when we came." And other than a little bit of wet, you know, from our feet, I think it was, you know, we picked up after ourselves, did a great job, but uh, the kids liked to get out and it, it felt like a, you know, nice reward. And then, of course, students that needed to make up some time did that on that day as well, so uh, that was great to close out the calendar year. Uh, our December staff meeting was about a month ago and we, we kind of did an awards. We did a mid-year award for, for our and tried to acknowledge a few outstanding, uh, teachers at kind of that midway point, but tomorrow kind of marks the true midway point for our staff and we're gonna be doing a little bit of reflection with our teachers in our staff meeting tomorrow, just to have our teachers take a moment and pause and say, "Are we getting what we want out of the classroom right now?" You know, are our outcomes showing what we want at this point? If there's things we want to change, what are they and how can we help? Just a time to just, you know, take a step back and look at how that first semester's gone and that's how we're used our time tomorrow, so. I'm really excited to announce that, uh, this morning Rachel Caspers started. Uh, she is our new student services office, uh, secretary, kind of our registrar. We've been without that since Tammy Crowell left in early November, so we're really excited to have Rachel on board and she was awesome jumping right in today. It was great to have her, so welcome to her. I want to extend a note of thanks to all of you. I believe it's school board appreciation month unless I've got a calendar wrong, but uh, welcome to our new board members and then thank you to all of you that we've been working with throughout the years. It's, it's great, the leadership that you all provide, so I want to thank you and take a moment to do that and of course, special welcome to, to Matt and Lynn. Um, CEO is having investor breakfast. I know Joel is planning to be there as he is part of our committee there. Uh, but that is November, I'm sorry, January twenty-third, uh, and we're gonna give our end of year twenty-three, twenty-four report and then just do a thank you breakfast for all of our investors, uh, and have a chance for this year's class to kind of talk about what they're doing as well within CEO. So that's gonna be up at the community center. I know Ms. Frank is, is invited to that. Uh, Joel will be there, myself, and our, our board. Uh, Joel will be there, myself, and our, our board is excited and looking forward to that. Captain's Council, we continue to meet and, uh, work on all, all sorts of leadership topics. Big topics for January and February. Um, number one is kind of fear of failure. We're talking a lot about fear of failure with our students and trying to help them develop skills and getting outside that comfort zone to where group, true growth happens. And also how they work on that with other people. And then in February, we actually have a, a alumni guest speaker coming in, uh, to work with them and talk about perseverance. Actually, Travis Muller is gonna come in and talk to the students in the captain's council in February about kind of his story a little bit and then help them and though it's tough. If February gets tough in the winter season, um, some of our sports will actually be almost done already, but some are just getting into that end of year push before the playoffs. So I think it's a great time for Travis to come in and, and share a message about perseverance there. So that's coming up. Uh, last Thursday, Marge Fogelman, our, our, you know, our Minnesota House of Representatives rep was here and, uh, she did principal for a day. She got to kind of shadow along with myself, Mr. Nielsen and Mr. Barfick, spent about three hours at Wyndham Schools and, and had a, had a great morning. Uh, I got her around to as many places I could in the high school. I know, um, Dane and Corey did as well in both the middle and elementary and got to meet a lot of students. The band played her a couple songs. Um, and, and it was just nice to have her. And she was very receptive and listening to anything she could to try to take up to session as we go. But it was just nice to have a, a face and a name and the kids could kind of identify that too. So um, when we move forward, if there's anything we have, it's just nice. And she kind of got to see how Wyndham Schools operated. And I think she was really impressed with what she saw. So uh, just a couple of items about things I'm gonna have going on. Uh, Ms. Squires and I are gonna attend a LIFT conference this Thursday. I'm gonna be out at the M A S S P Winter Conference at the end of this month. And then, of course, this, this Friday is end of the semester already. Uh, crazy. So, um, grading is gonna be due here two weeks after the close. I hope to bring back data from semester one regarding attendance and grades to all of you for our, um, February meeting, uh, regular board meeting here in a month. So any questions tonight?
Um, I just want to thank each and one of you guys. Um, definitely appreciate you guys. You guys are amazing, very proactive. You guys are great with the kids. I know you guys work hard. So just I really appreciate you guys and Mrs. Frank as well for all the things you guys do with the school system. So a lot of pride. So thank you.
I, I should say a special thanks to, to, um, Matt and Angie too, for being in school and doing some mock interviews today with our freshmen in the pathways class. I know having a freshman, they were, they, they were really excited. It was really, it felt real to them to do an interview with, you know, a real business person who's from the community and stuff. So, um, but I appreciate you guys taking time to come in and work with the students and doing that.
Well, that was a lot of fun. I know I enjoyed it. I think Matt did too. So some did really good and some have a little ways to go, but they didn't act a whole lot different than ones I've interviewed for my real job. So, um, anyways, hopefully nobody's watching. Too many people are watching us, so.
Alright, um, thank you, Mr. Joyce. Any questions for any of the principals? Alright, next up, we will do the superintendent report, Mrs. Frank.
Good evening, board members. The January first enrollment data shows that we have eleven hundred and thirty-four students in K twelve for our school district. This is no change from the December first, um, number. In fact, if you go all the way back to October first, we've kind of hovered right around that same number this entire school year. So, um, not a lot of fluctuation going on, um, with the enrollment. Alright, next I have an update for you on the Arts and Athletics Project. Uh, the review and comment was sent in to the, uh, Department of Education on December twenty-third, as you know. Um, I just wanted you to know that we did receive confirmation that they received the review and comment, and they are reviewing it at this time. So I'll let you know, um, when I hear back, um, you know, if they have questions or if it's simply approved. Uh, the FEMA BRIC grant, um, is being written right now as well. As part of this application, we need to adopt the Cottonwood County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is on our agenda later on, um, during this meeting. So we'll go ahead and adopt that and then, um, include it with the application. And then lastly, I just want to report that the calendar committee has been meeting regularly to work on the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand six academic calendar. So we found a way to have a two-week Christmas break and be done by May thirty-first. So it is one exciting time. Um, it is going to require teachers to come in for five days that very first week in August, but that is a trade-off that they voted on and, um, that's how they wanted it. So we're excited about that. Um, I will be bringing that calendar to you at the next board meeting for approval.
Alright, any questions for Mrs. Frank? Alright, if not, we'll go to number twenty-two, Board Committee Reports. Um, does anybody have any reports? I don't think there is. So we will move on to number twenty-three. Um, this is just an informational. So we're gonna talk about the Wyndham Area School Board Handbook, and I am gonna turn this over to Brianne.
Okay, Bruce and Jamie and Teresa and I met to just go over, uh, MSBA already had handbook in place. And so we were looking at adjusting it to fit Wyndham well. Not, um, a lot of changes, other than some minor dates and stuff here. But, um, if we go to district identity, there are no page numbers on this one, so I'm not sure which page it would be for you guys. But we just, um, we wanted to specify all of our buildings in there. So we made that change to it as well as um, adding our many community partnerships that we have. It's a long list. It's great. So we expanded that. And then we edited the next page, um, board members to current members. And we also added Jamie to the superintendent's office because she was not on that initially. Yeah. Um, and then, and when we get to references, just know that those are all the links for those different handbooks are embedded electronically. And we wanted to add in QCOM goals for reports for M D E. And then let's see, district intake paperwork is courtesy of Peggy. So that should be very thorough. So two areas that we just wanted, oh, we, we also edited it so it wouldn't say workshops. It would say work sessions, since that will, that's what we call it. So we discussed how many conferences we would like to encourage board members to attend, um, in a four-year term. And we just modified the wording to include strongly recommended that board members attend. And we were thinking two conferences. Um, so that'd be on about a one, once every other year basis. Um, and there are a couple of conference options that you can choose. And then, um, well, we also did want to add though, we talked about, um, having a board self-evaluation in the summer maybe, um, because we did that during strategic planning. It was helpful, I think, for us to reflect on how we were doing functioning as a whole. So we thought maybe we could include that in a summer session, just to make it a regular part of what we do. And I think that was under the attr- um, attributes of high performing board teams. I'm making it really easy for you to follow along here, Peggy. Sorry about that. And then, um, so there were just the main areas that we wanted you guys to consider and think about was, um, do we want to incorporate a threshold for attendance, um, at board meetings? Because when you take on this role, you are committing to being an active member. Um, and sometimes attendance has been a bit of an issue, but also adding a requirement does make it a little bit more complicated. So we would have to discuss what that looks like then if a staff does not, or if a board member does not follow through with that. Um, so we just asked that you guys think on that one. And if you have any feedback, just shoot Bruce or myself and Jamie and Teresa a message about that. And then, oh, the other, yeah, the other one was just the every other year conference. But other than that, we will also edit or the new committees, since we voted on it tonight, will be added in to that. That is the extent of our edits to our board handbook. Any questions, anybody?
Alright, tonight's just the fir- first read, um, and we, it will be on the agenda, um, at the next meeting for approval. Alright, we are gonna move on to number twenty-four. And this is the approval of the literacy lead position, Mrs. Frank.
As part of the Read Act, districts are required to have a literacy lead on staff, okay? Um, this job description that is in your board packet, uh, came from M D E. And so this is going to be similar across all districts or, uh, across Minnesota. So let's just look through it. We're not gonna read through the whole thing. Um, but what I'm gonna ask you to do tonight is to approve the literacy lead position so that I can post and hire for it. So we're looking for it to be someone who is a teacher already within the district. And then the literacy lead responsibilities would be in addition to or extra. So there'd be an additional compensation of fifteen days, um, for this particular job. Alright, so, uh, the position summary and objectives. Uh, the district literacy lead is a literacy specialist with expertise in working with educators as adult learners. Um, the literacy lead supports the implementation of the Read Act legislation at the local level. The core responsibilities will include collaborating with the district administration and the regional literacy lead, which we do have through the co-op. Um, to provide school-based, uh, support to school-based coaches, uh, to support the implementation of structured literacy interventions, curriculum delivery, and teacher training, as well as professional development. And as you know, we are already in the second year of our letters training. Remember, we kind of saw this coming, so we got ahead of it, right? And Mr. Nielsen said to me, hey, can we get going on this letters training even before it was required? Because we could see that it was going to be required and, and it's really good training. So we thought it'd be best. So we are kind of a year ahead of most districts. Um, so getting this literacy lead in place to help with the implementation of the curriculum is really important. Um, other than that, the literacy lead would assist with professional development, um, assist with, uh, the development of the literacy plan, rather. Um, and then engage with the regional network community of practice for literacy leads. So that is a summary of what this, uh, position would do. And are there any questions around this?
Um, sure. Thank you guys for being proactive on this. I'm assuming it lines up with the verbiage for the Read Act, so it covers our basis, I'm sure.
Yes, uh, M D E drafted this job description. So yes, we are, we are aligned.
I, I assume that, but.
Alright, any other questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion, please? Second. Alright, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number twenty-five, we are going to approve a resolution to adopt the Cottonwood County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mrs. Frank.
So when Teresa sent out the agenda, it, she included a link for the, um, Cottonwood County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And it is over two hundred pages long. So it, we didn't put it in the packet because it would take up a lot of space. So hopefully you had a chance to review it. Um, it's very thorough. I thought it looked great. I talked to Paul Johnson about it. Um, so we are, we are good. Um, the resolution that's in your board packet is what he needs at the county level to show that we've adopted it. So, and then that, this resolution will also go in the FEMA BRIC application.
Alright, any questions on this? Alright, can I get a motion, please? Second. Alright, beans, this is a resolution. We will do a roll call vote. Lynn? Barb? Matt? Bruce? Bree? And myself, yes. Motion passes. Number twenty-six, we are going to approve the amended naming rights document. Mrs. Frank.
Alright, last month, uh, the board approved an amended Arts and Athletics Project. And so with that, we need to amend the naming rights document that we had looked at earlier and approved. So everything in red is new, so we can just start scrolling through this, Peggy. Um, I did add a clause in here that says, um, should the district establish a five oh one C three educational foundation, any proceeds not expended on the naming rights project can be transferred to that foundation. I just put that in there because, um, I think we will be exploring the option of a foundation and then we don't need to come back and add that in later. Um, if you look at level three, I deleted the team rooms because, uh, the team rooms were removed from the project, the outside team rooms, um, for the athletic project. So we crossed those out. Crossed out varsity softball and vars- varsity baseball. If you look at level five, um, I crossed off things that were associated with varsity softball and baseball, like the home dugout, the visitor dugout, press box. I did add in a sports medicine room because I, um, believe we might have someone interested in buying naming rights for that. Um, level six, I added in, uh, lower level softball and lower level baseball. Um, level eight, we took out the lights for the baseball field and the track because those are no longer in the project right now. So those were the edits that now align with the adjusted project that is being reviewed right now by M D E.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions? Alright, if not, can I get a motion, please? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, number twenty-seven, uh, the board is now going to go into closed session to discuss the super test, superintendent contract. Um, once we are done in there, we will close out the meeting at that time. Alright, thank you, everyone. Um, now you gentlemen can get home and maybe turn on some football. So, alright.